Let's stand and do the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Think your owl shot the other two guy.
Must have. Must have scared him away.
Yep. Your owl must be bigger.
Is it a parent issue with those? And we have liftoff.
Public discussion. Is there anybody here for public discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated November 29th? Motion by class, second by Casey.
I'll second.
Oh, same as already. By Stecker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried unanimous. Everybody had a time to review the claims?
Yeah, I had a question. You just walked in for good timing. You bought a 500 gallon LP tank for the maintenance shed. What's that for? Don't you got gas already there or no?
That would be for the new power washer.
Oh, okay. Cause I was gonna say, cause aren't you hooked to natural gasser?
We are, but we wanted to run that on propane. Cause we didn't have enough. We don't have enough gas, natural gas to run all of our furnaces and everything. So, we chose to put LP there.
Okay. All right. So, I'm just curious. I figured you already had heat while you buy another tank. Or that was a portable for something.
Any other questions on the claims? Do I have a motion to approve the claims? So, the motion by Casey, second by.
I'll second.
Stecker. Any more discussion on claims? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried unanimous. Do I have a motion to approve the handwritten claims? Open by Stecker. I'll second it. Any discussion on the handwritten claims? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your Roger, your meeting ain't tomorrow tonight.
And I thought.
Read your computer. You were saying earlier that that meeting's tomorrow at 7:00?
No, I did.
Oh, okay. Cause it says here tonight. So, you don't have a meeting.
Thank you, Charlie. It's just the front page receipt, is your aid?
Yes. Check, but that's all I see.
Thank you.
That's it. Nothing else on claims. We're up to the CO2 pipeline ordinance update. Do we have any information from towns?
Um, I, after I got your email Nancy, I sent an email to Tim Whipple, who is the attorney that's representing us for the ordinance. And he sent an email back and he said, on the ordinance side, he's received the comprehensive plan, which is the plan that the county has had for many years. I'm reviewing it now. We'll review your current zoning ordinance and then we'll adapt the Shelby County ordinance to fit specifically into your current plan and ordinance. This does take some time and has been delayed some while I have been meeting the IUB deadlines and preparing for December 13th. So, that was his response to the ordinance. All right.
And any other questions on your name, Nancy?
Are we using Shelby County setback or we?
I assume that we were following Shelby County.
I thought we did our setbacks and Todd wrote them down and he sent them to me though.
Yeah, I know, but. If we're gonna win in a case, I think you're gonna have to all have the same idea on setbacks.
That's why we're Hancock, Cassuit and Palo Alto are gonna have the same one. So, we agree in order.
Yeah.
But I was told that they would, whatever we did, they'd agree to it. Sis said that. And Palo Alto, when they went over there and talked to them, they said.
Who said you're saying?
Send us a copy of it. We'll copy yours.
Okay. As long as we're all the same, that's the only thing I'm worried about.
There'd just be the three of us together.
Right.
Well, that's, that's where I think it, we'll have to go back to the comprehensive plan. And I know one of the things was setbacks from residences that I believe Shelby County's Board of Health passed a resolution saying that that was their determination or whatever. So, it was built off processes that happened prior to that. And unless we match all that up, I don't know if we can just match the numbers and call it good.
I.
But, yeah, I mean.
I'm going to rely a little bit on the attorney Whipple to, that has to justify what we're doing.
Well, yeah, and that's where at the end of his email, like Tim read it, he's following through the comprehensive plan. So, that makes sense because he talked about that a lot down in Des Moines.
Yeah, because if we're a lone duck out here, we're not gonna win.
Well, that's like you said, Sis Graham said shit back. It's, uh, it's what I was told by your top court. And then Palo Alto said that back us too.
As long as we're all on the same page, that's fine.
Cause there was, what, two, three? You didn't go to that meeting over Palo Alto, did you?
I went to one of them.
Was that the one with Shannon and Matt? Okay. Cause that's what they told you then, correct? Whatever Cassuit does, send us a copy and we'll copy, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Which, the pipeline here is larger. The one in Shelby County is only eight inch pipeline.
Yeah, we're 20, 24, ain't we? 24?
It's up to 24 inches here.
How do they, when they say they gotta run a pig through once in a while, how do they run a pig through? When you got an eight inch line, you got 24 inch line and you got variances. How does that work?
You would change it at each size. Yeah, you'd pull out the one.
Put a new one in? Where they got their pumps, basically.
I'm not sure. I, I did see a video on it and they have corrective states. It's where they put the end.
Because when they ran that pig through down at Laverne on the Hozers farm, but then Hydras line, that's when they blew it. It got stuck and then she, they said you bury a house in that hole. Those pigs ain't the best things either.
I mean, I would assume they would happen to change it where their pipe changes size. They probably have, I mean, for the pipe to change size, they'd probably have something else onto the line. So, that's where they have an access point, probably. For a lack of better term, yeah.
Anything else on the CO2 pipeline? What the record show, we can discuss. And we are up to appointments for NiCAG related boards. That was yours?
Yes, you were my.
Alternate?
Yes, you were my alternate. So, cause you went to one or two formula.
I'll take the job. It's, it's close. If you wanna appoint me, Mr. Casey, it'll be your prerogative.
I will appoint you to take my position on our board.
I have a motion by Mr. Casey to appoint Drax to be the NiCAG second, second in by plan. Any discussion?
Are we just doing NiCAG or?
Yeah.
Transportation?
That's all NiCAG.
That's all.
Yeah.
It's all NiCAG.
They're different though.
It was still all NiCAG.
Donnie's on transportation and emergency response.
I'll add one later when we do.
When I talked to Myrtle the other day on the phone, her main concern was my spot.
Right.
Cause I told her, I said, Donnie's got two spots. And she said, those aren't as important as the one that you're on. So, she goes, please have us one by January 1st appointed.
We'll, we'll do the other ones when we do all the appointments. Yeah. If that's all right with the rest of the board.
I just wanted.
This one here, they always do different.
So, she's, the page says to have it served by December 31st for all the appointments. So, it's okay if we don't get it to me.
Oh, well, then we'll do one. I didn't know we had to do the rest of them.
She told me they weren't as important.
Yeah, well, yeah, let's, let's just, that's fine. I just, I just wanted to ask a question.
Usually you do it when they're in new boards on.
Yeah, and I saw in there, it said something about the 2080s had something for December. That 2080 establishes the counties agreed to appoint their boards by directors in December.
Well, Harley, he's silly. So, I got Maureen.
Maureen, Maureen said she wasn't gonna do it anymore.
Well, she said she was gonna do it for another year, but Linda is not.
Yeah.
Okay.
Linda's not there. No, we don't find Linda's spot. Do we do? Linda finds Linda's spot? Or, or do they, NiCAG gonna find Linda's spot?
We can.
We do.
That's fine. So, I just wanted to know if we were called on. But yeah, it probably would be better to do the rest in the first of the year.
I think so. Then you got the rest of the board involved, the new board.
Yeah.
Unless you wanna call her, Tammy, and tell her that we got somebody replaced. I mean, if she says we have to, then next week, let's pick somebody for the other two spots.
So, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Thank you. We have transfers. Everybody take a minute to look at the transfers. Any questions? Seeing none, but the record showed that we acknowledge the transfers. We are up to decision approval of tax increment, all financing, TIF indebtedness and certify with county auditor and authorize the chairperson to sign. Anybody have any questions on the TIF district? Public information's $81,599. Right. And it is the Buffalo Township, urban renewal one for the big six co-op element.
That's called legal.
That's right. Now, it's called legal, yeah.
Yeah.
I move to approve. I have motion by plan, second by Stecker. Any more comments on the TIF district? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. Then I'll sign down here.
You have to mark it, I know. Trustee.
It's got the name on here.
She, she has the actual.
Oh, she have the paper for it?
Before it's on. On to all the re.
Yeah, Marj, you wanna come down for the Laverne Township trustee? Thank you. Yeah.
So, Tom Zedner, JD Savage, Levi. And this is Maryland, 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 Frieders, Secretary.
So, Galen got in contact with me, Laverne Township, had a trustee that was no longer wanted to be a trustee.
He'll, he can still do it except he moved to Oklahoma.
Right.
So, he had no option.
Township. So, this is the field of the making of the city.
There's Levi.
Levi Studer, yeah.
He lives in the same house that the other trustee used to live in.
Sandy.
Dean Frieders.
Yeah.
Dean Frieders was on before JD Savage. He moved to Sherman Township.
So, would you like to make the motion to appoint?
Yes, I'll make a motion to appoint Levi Studer as the new township trustee for there.
I'll second your motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried unanimous.
I got a question. Levi asked me that to get a seat from the other day. How come people in Laverne town can't be a trustee? Cause it's a town?
It's incorporated.
Cause it is incorporated. So, they cannot have, so they can only be like on the city council?
Right.
Right.
Okay.
It wasn't incorporated.
Like Irvington, anybody can be incorporated.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marj.
Thanks, Marj.
Doug was in here. Although, again. One isn't. Yep.
You wanna come back then?
Yeah.
This is just a sign of now so that we have a. And. We start to sign also. Judge Gales and she is hoping to be in here, but they have a separation with Mrs. Jane Kristen. So, she's gonna get back to me. These are me, but to my life. And she said she'd get back to me soon. She paid.
Okay. We do that on the last.
She was big for the tremendous.
Okay.
That's what she was hoping for.
If you're gonna go up somebody, tell me these eight, can you go?
I don't know if there's a deadline for how many days, but we have to have it for four, for the end of the second.
Yeah. 28, 29 to 30, it'll all work.
Yeah, like I was used to, do it on second, right after we closed.
Yeah, we don't have enough.
We're not here on the second.
Oh, I see.
It's a whole thing.
Oh, yeah.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, Doug.
We did not receive any requests for construction real right away.
Anything else, Doug?
Um, just to bring you up to date a little bit on construction, the bridge down near Irvington, they're planning to pour barrier rail tomorrow. After the barrier rail is poured and cured, the remaining construction that's left is guard rail. They still have a lot of things to clean up around there, obviously, but hopefully, we're still hoping that that would get opened up yet this year. So, for traffic. Up at Lincoln Township, they're pouring caps, another cap this afternoon, and then they'll start driving piling again. Uh, the brick or the culvert replacement project in Grant Township, that is complete now. We did get Kyle for your information, that ice has been tiled. That's all been taken care of.
The time did.
Yes.
Perfect. Thanks.
Uh, the wind projects, they're reclaiming a lot of roads, trying to get that all completed yet this year. So, open position and mechanic shop, Bone Rock, did get a higher young man by the name of Hunter Ricky. It's going to be taking that position at the transfer station. A young man by the name of Blake Stevens will be working at the transfer station. Titanka, we received applications. I received three applications for the two positions. And I kinda just glanced at those applications yesterday. I'm going to try to get some interviews this week for that. And then the last thing that I have to say, I did receive a crossing application from the Summit CO2 Pipeline. I started reviewing that, but my plan is to reply to them and say that we will not. We will not even take any action on that until after all of the permits are granted from the state, the federal, so we know that they're going further along with the projects. So, and it's too early for us to even take any action on it. So, I am gonna reply back to that and go from there. Other than that. I'm going with design. And this winter, we're doing some cleanup of our inspection to buy our books and go from there.
Irvington Bridge, they got them tubes ripped out and all the rivers back to Maine or not. Cause they were down there for end of last week, several days. I see the echoes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they gotta get that center span, all the false work stripped out there yet. And after they get that, I'll take care of it. I think they could probably take that out. But that's part of the cleanup operation. They gotta get completed before.
And.
You know, they're, they're able to call that bridge.
Call 388.
I don't know what's, as of yesterday, it was still here.
It's too long.
I don't think it's bad.
So, they're gonna pour the, tomorrow, are we warming it for them?
Uh, I think this afternoon, they're planning on pouring.
Cause you told me once, it had to be what, 30?
40 degrees.
40 degrees.
Air temperature is supposed to be 40 degrees, yeah.
And that, the upper block, where they milled it off?
Yes.
Ground it. Uh, it's tall on the other side.
I sent your text.
Did you? Is that okay? Is that done? Or is it, we, it is done?
Yes.
Okay, cause uh. When it snowed a week ago and the snowplow went over it, there's dips in there where they ground it that run east and west, groove marks. And they said that was packed solid ice and snow and the grow grader can't get it. Because it's not smooth moving across there now. And the guy told me, he goes, you drive over that, it pulls you. I said, yeah, I know. You pull you north and south when you drive over that. So, I didn't know if it was done deal or if they had to come back and try to do something else or.
That might be one of those unintended consequences that we give. But, I mean, that cross slope should still be in there. I'll take a look at it.
Cause after they grounded, you could see those lines of an east and west about.
Yeah.
So far. Well, that's the ones that they, they filled up with snow and ice and grader can't get them out. I drove over, but I don't, when it snowed, I think I went down the Irvington Road and it went down the Gilbert Road.
So, they changed the profile of the road.
Well, they had dukes in it because of that bearing went out. Then they ground it. And then they come back and put some sealer with some rock on it. And all the semis has all beat all that seal and rock off. And others, like I said, there's grooves and you drive on it. If you're going 55, you just feel your truck go like this. Wants to pull you back and forth. But what is it, Doug? Two miles? About a half?
Uh, it's over a mile.
Over a mile.
Not two, four, up a mile and a quarter.
But I just had a conservative citizen ask me that yesterday. So, I mentioned it to you.
Will look at it.
Thank you, Doug.
You bet. Anything else?
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Harrison, how much it was?
Yeah.
Wasn't anybody.
No.
The key danger was one thirty. It was a bit high buried. Seventeen thousand, one fourteen, seven, sorry, seventeen. Fourteen. So, you know, Dennis, they told me the same thing. I'm sure they're going to be one.
Jack, you know those bars on the Irvington, like, you know, Bristol's?
What?
You know Bristol's, they built three bars yet on his post?
Yeah.
They're gone.
Really?
Once about that phone.
Oh, yeah.
They got lit up the other day.
Yeah. Oh, that's sound. Yeah. That's a good sound. Did you get to the other day?
Yeah, but I didn't have any of that, but it's just like the.
To that, so Marge, do we know what turning piece was? That gives a dollar dollars. Anybody know that? That all got filed against thirty seven?
Yes, it was all filed two hundred and seven.
We are, including county business and starting on drainage. First thing on the, uh, agenda is a letter from Brad Charf, follower, Proctor, Fair Gray, they're getting starting ICAT decision on insurance coverage for the end to end case. And do we just acknowledge the decision, Marge? Is that what? We should do, that is my opinion, we should have a different one.
Just acknowledge that I can.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions on the ICAT decision? If not, I would make a motion that we acknowledge it and put it in the minutes.
You're just going to acknowledge it?
We're going to acknowledge it. I got a motion in there, but.
Do the motion to accept it.
I think we should. That way it will be in the minutes. Okay. I'll move to accept the decision or to acknowledge the decision and put it in the minutes. Is that, that would be the correct?
Yeah, acknowledge.
And then put it in the minutes.
All second.
Second place sector. Yep. You had any discussion on it, Marge? Do you have anything else? Put it in the drainage records. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carried. It'll go in drainage seven, drainage records. Next, we have decision to hire an attorney for case LA CB oh two seven seven four five on William and Mary Goshi LLC. Global Assets LLC, Joseph P. Goshi versus Cassup County Board of Supervisors. We have an attorney that's ready to handle part of the case.
I talked to Jim Hudson and we've been contacted by Goodwin. But he said, since you haven't been served, he's going to talk to him if he's willing to, um, work for you based that you haven't been served, he says, there's no requirement to do anything until the morning.
And, and I had talked to Todd about that. I mean, I've been getting emails on this for, well, for a month now. Bolton and Mink is included in the lawsuit. They have their attorney on it. They also have not been served, to my knowledge, but Todd said he thought it would be advantageous to get our attorney involved because it's, it's not going to hurt anything. It just might as well get it done so we can actually be working on it.
So is that your motion?
Yeah, I would move to appoint them both as.
Hudson and Goodwin.
Hudson and Goodwin.
Okay.
But we don't know if Goodwin's going to do it yet, do we?
Well, you don't know if we need him yet or not.
Well, you don't know if Goodwin's going to do it yet, do we?
No, but Hudson was going to talk to him if he's available to do it, which.
He's available, I heard.
If he's available to do it.
Yeah, he'll, yeah, I'm sure he'll do it.
Where's he at?
He aims or Des Moines. I want to say Ames. I'm unsure.
Yeah, true. I think it's saying Hudson is going to be part of the tour.
Uh, yeah, Hudson's, Hudson's full harness, but I think Goodwin's Ames.
Are we supposed to use the milk for it for a while?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all good.
Yeah.
Does anybody want to second Mr. Becker's motion? I'll second his motion. Any other discussion? Marge, do you have anything else on it?
Will you call Hudson now or are you told Todd to get a hold of Hudson or?
I mean.
Marge, well.
Marge can let it know that.
Yeah, Marge.
It's official that way. I have talked to him about this already, but just three phone calls.
Marge will email both of them.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be good.
Any other discussion on the subject? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried unanimous. We are up to discussion landowners request to use spoils from an open ditch.
It's typically yours.
Yeah, and, yeah, I saw that on things on there, but, um, Mark Louventhall's on his way and I had told him I figured nine to nine thirty with what we had on the agenda. So we're, since we're ahead of schedule, he's not here yet, but he needs to come.
Let's go through, do the drainage requests and stuff.
Yeah, we can skip over that, come back.
Do you have, Marge, you can add a couple requests? Want me to just hand them down?
This one.
Yeah, I think it's. You want me to read it or you see it in the folder and everything? Empire type services, they didn't televise.
Oh, okay.
Uh, man, Kate won't.
Yeah.
Is working or?
So this one actually is, the majority of the tile is okay. There was a spot right off the side of the road where actually two intakes have been put in over the years. Kind of side by side. I don't really know what's going on there, but, um, that was kind of jumbled up mess. To put it mildly, like it was, it was not really great in there. But it was, the tile was open, so it was, it would be able to flow if there was water in there. There was, it was bone dry when we went in. But through the road was the biggest concern and then we went, I don't know, six, eight hundred feet total. So we went way, well out to the other neighbor's field and there was nothing substantial for restriction. So probably try and get the, um, intakes off the edge of the road fixed and make that better so it's not washing out or being any issue there. Otherwise, the rest of the tile was just fine. It's, it's small, but it's working, so.
But it was drained, that's what you want to look at or what?
He was, he was concerned on the speed even, thought it was restricted.
That's small, that's just because it's a small tile.
Yeah, it's an eight inch tile.
Takes time.
You're only going to get so much water through it, so.
How long's this been going? Because you have growth last two years.
Well, prior to that, yeah.
Last month ago.
He just brought us, me this summer and stuff and I said I'd get, um, televise when they were in the area for other stuff. And then once we did get televised, I realized we hadn't done the actual request yet, so.
Most water can be in the tiles before you can't televise it.
Depends on the size of the tile. Ideally, half of the pipe or less because you want to be able to see, um, with the camera and stuff, yeah, so they can, they can raise it depending on whether they're in a smaller, bigger, um, car, whatever, but yeah, I mean, half of the pipe or less is ideal.
Is this a cord up to it, the way they go or is it no cords up to it?
No, there is, there is an umbilical.
I mean, if I cut them, or you just pull up there.
They just wind it up.
Bull, yeah. They got power, um, wind on the umbilical, but then they can also drive forward and back with the car too. So I mean, it's, it's got both capabilities, but when you do back up and go to pull it out, you pull the cord with it. Usually that's as fast as the, um, driving, but if it's not, if you're a ways out there or whatever, they'll just roll their speed back and slow down a little bit so the cord stays straight and stays tight.
So.
Yeah. So that day we will, we already paid the bills for it, but that day we actually did four different things in the same day.
I need a motion for the supervisors to handle their drainage request.
Still move.
Casey? Your second, yeah. Last seconds. Any more discussion on the request? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. You said nine o'clock, Tom?
He should, he should be here soon, but I'll, you know, he's in.
Do you want to do discussion with the auditor?
We should, um, they wanted to give us an update on the jail, so if you don't mind that coming. Okay, you're ready? Okay, thank you. And while he's coming up here, um, I emailed you yesterday, the order setting this new hearing has been moved to January. So there will no longer be one next week on the thirteenth. It has been rescheduled to Friday, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty three at one o'clock PM. And I did email you a copy of that order, so you should have that in there.
Then when it's set?
One second. At one. So you have one on the thirteenth, the next week you can cross that.
Do you have a zoom here?
What?
You gonna have a zoom here?
I don't know, why don't you can. Yeah, I'll, one second.
I'm going to zoom my computer, so I'll miss no house anymore.
Yeah.
Or once I get out the third, if I, if I plug.
We, your name is.
I don't, just do, do it in here.
Yeah, you could.
Why don't we do it in here and then we'll have zoom up on the. That'd be my suggestion. Yeah, why can't we just do it here? Yeah.
Boy. Just an update on the project cross street. The last six units are coming on the twelfth. They're going to start with Crane again. Back to the cards. They flipped the date from the eighteenth to the fifteenth of December. So I don't know if we're ever going to give. Joey still don't have them. Not one.
Yeah.
You'd think if they had three of them, they'd send them. So. Whenever you guys want to, oh, meeting, I'll get her set up. Put some fire under somebody.
Considering that project was supposed to be clear back in May.
Right.
Cards should have been here way long time ago, so there's some, something funky going on.
Sounds like one hand don't know what the other hand's doing.
I would agree with that, but I said from the beginning, there was some funny business between them two, sure.
Do you want to make an agenda items for a meeting to talk to, to contact you? You want to contact them?
I would just pick a date and I'll tell them I need to be here.
Next week?
No.
No.
I won't be here next week.
So much for picking the date.
Twentieth?
That's fine. That gives them two weeks to plan, so.
Okay. We'll do it on twentieth.
Because then, then we shouldn't know for for sure, because the, we can always cancel an agenda item.
Right.
Asking, because they are saying now twelve fifteen is the new date, so if not, if we don't.
That'd be, that'd be a good time to have one.
Yeah, because if we don't have it by the twentieth, then, then.
Yes.
Then there's just on our chain.
I just want to make sure if they, for some reason they do show up, we can just cancel.
Yeah, yeah. Sounds like a plan.
And if they do show up, they could still come here and have a visit.
That's up to you. I don't care. I'll come and sit here.
The agenda won't be out until the sixteenth, so it will take off the agenda.
Yeah. Well, there's no reason to have them in here if they come, I'm assuming, unless you have something else.
Oh, I.
Okay.
I just wanted to be able to get control of the building. That's our main concern.
Yeah.
And get the project wrapped up.
It's been a long one.
It's a little overdue.
Yeah.
If Crane will be here tomorrow, we're going to set the new chiller. Just for that information. They're working on piping now.
Okay. Other than that, everything else is working? Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Roger. That's Mark. If you want to talk on Jerry.
Yeah, we'll go back to drainage. Um, I got to find out where I'm at. You're here. I want to use spoils off the ditch bank, correct?
Correct.
Uh, tell us in what you want to do with it.
I didn't hear what you said.
What do you want to do with the spoils?
Bring it up my yard and use it for a building bed.
Okay. It's on drain. It's on drain.
Drain four.
It's on drain four on the back slope that's.
They got some high spots in that area too.
Where's this at?
You know where Jeff Didering is?
Yep.
Right on the other side of the road, to the north side and it blacked out. So right upstream of that.
So they haven't been leveled yet totally?
No, not totally, it's been partially leveled, but it's not buttoned up.
You plan to do it now or in the spring?
Probably not in the spring.
Now or?
Or probably in the spring.
Probably in the spring, as I said, it's pretty froze now. Which is very good.
If it's not frozen now, it will be soon.
Yeah.
I, do you have any more questions?
Well, just keep the integrity of the bank. Yeah, I mean, we don't want gouges, it's, yeah, that's the main.
Ready for motion?
Yep.
So, to approve it.
State his name and word, DD four.
Do you want it for Donny Lumenthalz's dad, for the owner, do you want it, what name do you want or whatever?
The, the landowner.
Yeah, so it'd be Donny's name, right? Okay, so to approve Donny Lumenthalz to. Use spoil off drain four, open ditch. For their personal use.
Come on Gloria.
That's all.
Your secretary makes the motion, I'll second his motion. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Close. You're good.
Thank you.
We are back to auditor discussion.
So, next week.
Yeah, they have, yeah.
Next week, we finish up our budget request for um, on accounting. Or sorry, um, out of. Department head requests, what are patients with the mold and mold work, so that'll be starting at ten o'clock. Next week, we'll, I will essentially schedule what we have, um, listed and we'll also be in the agenda, so we'll see what.
All day? Or not that far yet?
I think, okay.
Okay, that's fine.
But um, I think it's just one morning, but I will send you a schedule soon. And then I am setting up, I sent out a shareable, available calendar for department heads to. Set up their. Meeting times with you in January, so um, they have been setting up those times and we right now have two days. That we're setting aside for those, and then if we need time after that, then we can do it after that, but that would be the first week in January. So hopefully we can get most of it done at that time. This week, um. We'll talk to Jim Hudson. Options for removing dirt from DD four, budget presentations, and then um. A year of service award, so that's all I have on for next. And that's all I have.
Carter, do you have anything else on drainage? Did you go to the meeting? You went to the meeting?
Yeah.
We just, we'll go to board report in time.
Yeah, um, so I actually had three meetings in that same morning. At IDDA, Third Judicial District and Zoom for Workforce Development with the state. So I tried to pick up on all three of them actually, but um, IDDA had, they had. Three speakers, um, talked about. Practices for um, improving water quality. Some of the things that are happening in that forum, obviously the business meeting, um, legislative priorities. They did not have anything in the legislative priorities about the carbon pipeline, but they anticipate stuff coming up about that this session and said. They would handle that accordingly. Decent meeting, but nothing too crazy.
They still promote that, bust the tile where they bleed up, run across the ground, put it back in the tile around for cleanliness.
Oh, yeah.
Buffer, or like the, the wetland areas?
Like a main, they'll bust the main, then they let the water come up out of the ground, runs across the top, so that the sun kills the nitrates. And then it goes back down into the tile, way it goes again.
I don't think they're promoting that.
Oh, we have.
There's.
We have programs to pull for that.
Well, there's, there's different, different ways of functionally doing that, like. The one that would probably be. Most common or most commonly proposed, I would say now would be. Diverting it into a holding basin of sorts that has like wood chips or something in there to. Soak in the nutrients, especially nitrogen that's in there, but then. Anything that, like when I talked to Tyler on all these things, anything that cannot be handled by that. If it's heavy rain events or whatever, your main is still intact, it just. Kinda diverses it if it's able to. So it's not, I don't think there's anything where it takes it up out of the ground and puts it back in.
And though it does bleed up, which you got a heavy rain.
Yeah.
Well, we, a lot of those programs don't work in Cusick County, we just don't have enough fall.
Well, and, and one of the options, like, I know Bolt makes that how many they're working on.
They got like six in the county?
Yeah, I was gonna say about a handful, give or take, but. Fast the initial round, there's other sites that are potentials if they go to pumping stations. Because then the, the um. Fall and the grade and all that stuff doesn't have as much of an impact, it, you can, you can do a lot more things if you incorporate pumps. Cause it opens up the geography that way, so. There's, there's possibilities, but I don't know of anything, just breaking the tile, free flowing it up on the ground and going back, I don't think they're doing that anymore.
And we were talking on that Moon Valley Watership meeting, so I was going to there, promote that at the time for that.
Yeah.
That's the water heads to Des Moines and they get all the nitrates.
They might have more fall for stuff like that, but yeah, I don't, I haven't heard any of that around here for us.
A lot of guys, they won't, they won't do it.
I don't know why.
Way hit bad or die in your fields, so if they bust your main, then your waters just sit there.
There's, there's way to handle nutrient reduction strategies without impacting drainage negatively that way.
You know, take care of the nu- nitrates, cut the city water out from up and down Stormbrade. Was fertilizer on the city streets and there's nursery fields.
Yeah, there is. Per acre.
Mr. Casey, do you have anything?
I had uh, no meetings, but I had uh, well, I got, went down, talked to Levi, got him to be the trustee, um. Had a guy call me on that road, which I know exactly what he's talking about, how you sway back and forth. And. Had some people call me on the pipeline. I didn't have any calls on the wind this week, so it was pretty much done. But.
Are they all done with construction now?
Oh, they've got the last one up for, maybe up here in March, that'd be weeks, month ago already, probably.
They filled the dirt back and put that black dirt level up.
I see some of them are spinning, but I don't know if they're running, but they took the brakes off of some of them.
They'll probably turn them on January first, so they can save another year taxes.
They got a tax abatement again through the state. For half.
I did a, that one right by mom's that didn't run since March, they put new blades on it around Thanksgiving. They had two, not as big cranes, but they reached to the top. They didn't take the head off, how do you take a blade without it dropping? How do you get the sleeve back if there's, because it's narrowed to fat, so you can stick a sleeve on it, or how the heck, I've never seen them do it. Yeah, they took.
They have a whole bunch of bolts on there, the bolts up to the hub.
And I thought they'd take the whole hub off like they did when they set it the first time.
I would think they'd have anchor points on there, but I don't know.
But you can't, they're, let that blade hit the ground, Eric's, with the, what is it, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, something like that? Percent is what I was told.
Lot of money.
A lot of money.
Just a blast of the journey. Uh, no meetings, had a, some person stop me, had some questions on EMS. Want me that Dave Bennett resigned from the city position.
He did what?
He resigned his city position.
He did.
Yeah, so, I said, well, got a half hour talk with the, with the, this gentleman over EMS. So, that's what I had. So, Marge and I met with someone on drainage one afternoon. And we gave them our rules for crossing the county line. That was most of it. And other than that, Friday, I. Didn't get out of bed, I didn't feel good. I didn't wake up till eight o'clock.
You, you must have been sick.
Mm-hmm.
I was in Fort Dodge before this.
Yeah. I said, I'll stay here for a while. So. Anything else, anybody?
Check the schedule for next week, um, we do have a couple set up in the afternoon. Right now, it goes till two o'clock, but I know there's a couple that may reschedule, so there is some.
So, you have to wear a suit tomorrow, you went next week?
Next week.
Remember that.
What? What you talking to you?
Talking to you. Yeah. Might have to send an email out. And Doug.
Send a text out, some people don't check their emails. Yeah.
I didn't check my texts, man.
So you didn't check your texts, you came with a suit last week.
You didn't check it.
It was perfect though, cause we had those guys that are resigned or retired and get a suit on Rogers, it was perfect.
Well. We'll go into recess until ten o'clock. That looks good.
Are you still recording?
I'll leave it on just so I don't have to see it.
Okay, and I'll leave that right now.
Well, okay. It's up on the morning.
It is, yeah, every day is fine.
Okay, anything, um, just uh, that obviously, as to research, it's been a bit, I'm always here. If you, if you want to um, ask that we do things, right, we do, we absolutely try to accommodate that, so. But I understand you're going with, Mr. Whitlock, I believe, correct, um, and I'm representing a few other counties, um, but uh. We're here to collaborate and hope that's, it's something you can point to as well.
Thank you.
See what happens. Do what happens. Yeah, we tried a lot of that and that, but you know. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, it essentially. Three months ago now, I believe with the state, I, I know I updated you folks with the email, I can't be a. But um.
Probably less than three even.
Probably less than three, yes, probably two, two and a half, um, but uh, so we're early in that process and it's others. Uh, about ten months until even half, uh, a hearing, um, which they haven't said the date for yet, so. Um, until that happens, hopefully you really know, so. But we appreciate.
I might have one person on your utility board question.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I haven't heard anything, but that doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean anything, people don't tell me a whole lot, so. Were you, for uh, I said? Oh, for fun. Well, you don't go to meetings in the morning for fun. I can't blame you then. I forget who you put some of it in.
I'm with that.
You're absolutely, I suppose.
Yep, yep, yep.
They're the better.
I appreciate you for sure, thank you.
I don't know, so far it's been less than.
Yeah, I mean, and again, that's something I try to help out with, and I know Gavin had a few questions on. Uh, how gross drainage district says, well, uh, or across high, um, if that's something you want me to get. For you, I could definitely do that, uh, I'll outline, you'll, you'll follow our rules.
As far as, we have a procedure before you get to cross any of the county, just for the county, yes, but I mean for private tile as well.
I think, right, that's what he was mentioning, uh.
Well, part of, part of that reason is, there's a lot of mains down in this area that aren't county. Yes, it's, there's like, in my area, there's a lot of mains, but you still have private tile for, you know, the pattern tile, but. Individualized landowners, you know, but a lot of the facilities that serve multiple people, most of those are. Arranged district tiles, large facilities.
Yeah, our tile is a little older too. Are we, is that the reason why or no?
I don't know about that.
No, just that it's mains.
Yeah, cause.
You're not across much new mains.
Okay.
I don't think they cross any, any tiles.
No, I like to, well. If you're gonna cross a lot of them, you know.
You would, maybe well. I think you might have a potential to kind of do private one, but that's still be ten year old maybe. I'd have to, I don't, I'd have to remember exactly which sections you're going through, but there's. Well, yeah, I mean, it's almost a quota, yeah, it's an open, but I don't remember how far south in nine it is off my head. For different areas, a couple miles, I'll say, but yeah, falls to that.
Okay.
Which is, who's your fan? Oh, well.
I'm waiting for my colors, yeah, nice to meet you guys, I'd like to briefly here a while back.
Yeah, I think I did too, but I've been running, so, so, yeah, but.
Yeah, cool. I'm both talking, I'll be part of your. Oh, or you're talking to, so perfect. Uh, or I guess not that you're going through.
Yeah.
Specifically my area, but yeah, you still have, you still have questions to answer. I'll always be, uh, usually like here every couple weeks out of the zoo, you know, but uh. Sometimes it takes me a little while to get back, just as, um, I, usually in Northwest Isle, so.
We're not your only stop.
No, no, and everybody else on, uh, we do, everybody has a meeting the eight thirty, nine, the ten thirty on Tuesday, so. Where are you based at?
I'm based out of.
You're originally from. But yeah, based out of the point and uh, just trying to keep up and answer your questions, so.
Yeah.
Oh my god, yeah, three and a half, I'll be, you know, about three and a half, yeah, depending on which way you go. But I drove up last night, uh, oh, we don't do that, but like how? So. Where are you taking? I haven't seen you since. So you like to go out, but thank you.
Senator.
There you go. Yes, congrats. I bet that was a little stressful.
That's good to have it over.
Yeah, at least, you know, for nothing else, just to know, okay, what's the next year, four years, my life going. Yeah, at least, you know, for nothing else, just to know, okay, what's the next year, four years, my life going.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, I actually. Well, even before it's like a lot of internal, I mean. Just get it at that. But regardless, congrats guys. Actually, I have to learn, sorry, I have to go to the.
Oh, you're one up there for lunch.
I well, I have to go for the former appreciation thing, so.
We have budgets, uh the agenda.
But I I probably try and something up there. Yeah, and I would probably stay, but. We should catch up on the walls.
Hey, there you go, well, what time are we going through?
Yeah, I guess we probably won't leave though, so, well, nevermind, the the technically it's ten thirty to two thirty, so if you have. Time to buy.
There you go.
That's okay, I'm appreciating.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean. We're just, we're just handing stuff out, uh I've got. And uh.
Yeah, cuz Elizabeth had told me you should be there in the text.
Yeah, doing some handshake. Yeah, just, no, I mean, just, just say that, I mean, no. Again, I don't, my job's like, you know, just uh be nice, I don't feel so, no, I'm not. I just give it back. Kiss anybody, but yeah, no, I I know.
Kiss me.
Well, then, yeah. There you go. This, this red. No, but it would be good. I don't know what you think. Up there.
Pretends on who paid attention and who gets the text messages.
Yeah.
Cuz I saw that one. It would, it was not that long after I talked to Elizabeth, and then I got another Chris Moore to go through my layer, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would think there'd be some there. I don't know how many, but.
I don't know, it would be good.
I might swing up there a little bit, depending, so I guess if I need other things to do before.
She gets so much worried the weather. Yeah, we did since the summer, it's like yesterday.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
My my, I also like to buy it for some high school kid or college.
I mean, that's what I do, I like the way when I graduated, started out and started working on that. Two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
Well, we're uh not. I was a little bit too happy, it's actually our, there's sometimes our. First thing, you know, you got your counselor or they help every article, or it sounds like. Pretty married and, you know, usually the, you know, then it's pretty married, but.
Sorry.
Christmas early.
Christmas.
Awesome, yeah.
You got it, well. Got your weightlifting today.
I know.
The uh report you're doing so far still. I've been getting emails for a month plus, so.
What was this, the?
I figured it'd be about three or four in this day.
For him, he gets to get rid of the paper. It'll be lighter than that. On these.
The last time I. Last time I didn't get one either, so I was.
I didn't see your name on it. So this was before you.
My name is on it. I've I've been getting served already.
These ones all go to T M E. These are all performance.
Well, this.
It says.
Yeah, this is, yeah, I. Hold on, see, so my knee.
All right, that's good to see.
Yeah, no problem, see ya.
Take care. All the way back. At least it's later.
Well, I need to take.
Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll tell her.
Everyone wells today, so I didn't pick up the van. All right, some town and country.
There you go.
Looks just like our other one. I uh that's up, I have a. Curse in my country, okay, before we did a beer with the. I said eighty-five miles an hour down to interstate. That's how I remember my first time in country too, except for here in Wyoming, actually. That's a big deer. Little forest, no reception.
Oh, that makes things worse.
I was in it, I was on vacation, get to go camp out, medicine boat, back before it's go hiking, so I just found myself bumming around. Going fifty mile an hour, right when I went past the sign, there's a bear crowd, I think, boom, jumped right out of the bin. The deer was flying. Drove it home, but. That was. Are you looking for?
What? No, no, I. I just happened to see it. You don't see. Cars on online at that price.
Yeah, nice.
You guys have that pretty long thing.
No, I it's, yeah, Haley claimed it already, well, this is car. Industry at the beginning.
Well, hey, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank Jake. We'll see, we'll see each other around a lot more now.
Yeah, yes.
For good reasons.
Yes.
These off real guys. We'll see you guys around. New boards that you're open to be on. Um, well, I know I'm gonna go for the EMS. I I could be. Or EMS reporter, so. You been on your nap before. Over in Palo Alto, I drive to Nubsburg, I worked on the ambulance for.
Were you on there with Liz Burford? Cause she's the.
Sounds familiar. Yeah, cuz she was. She's in charge of the West End area or?
Uh, yeah, but she's in, yeah, she's Palo Alto County. She she works at through the college, I think, with something to do with the EMS.
And this was years ago.
Oh, okay, it's probably.
Four years? Yeah, four or five years.
Okay.
Then work there, I was, I worked on the ambulance while I was finishing up college.
Okay.
Time for a little bit of events and lots of uh.
Sure. I was just asking if I would. What's that? I don't know. Oh, yeah. Well, maybe that's our, those are notes, but.
Yeah.
So that's probably what we can use to. I'll probably be in with watershed. Because we we actually won't grow on.
What is Niacog? North Iowa area. Or association of. How do you get it? Oh, I, you're right. Government or something like that, it's like. Um, so basically it brings grants, uh you discuss like projects that are going on in different. Our different areas around. Niacog is like the the North Iowa, they have, you know, west, western Iowa, southern Iowa, they have different areas. I was just looking at that a little bit too.
Oh, so then we just take notes based on whatever department per is coming in. Maybe, because there's just a note sheet per.
Yes.
Per department. So. Guessing as people come in and request money, we just write down what they're requesting and all that. And sure will.
What is the? It's a library. It's two. There are two here today. City County Economic Development. I'm sorry, the City County Library or something. ACDC, that's another one that was actually kind of on.
Yeah. They're finding all of that stuff for us.
City County Economic Development.
Oh, okay.
That's that, that's a big small.
Well, I guess my uncle in the past.
I guess it's not technically a department of the county, but it's a board that. A board that the county.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. ACDC is uh. Made up of whole county, city and other local governments, right? It is like a. Our IT director is the, or is on the city council, he's uh. Because those. They probably that market. Economic Development Vehicles and so. Oh, you've gone to breakfast though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I probably recommend some space.
He's, I, Fox is the director.
Does Tammy have a current stuff in there for you guys to look at?
Well, it's all, it's all, like each apartment is notes, but then in the front here. Is where the.
It's so that's, that's got the levees, but it does not have a current budget, this.
No.
So they got all the old stuff out.
Yeah. I can build all my ass, my old stuff. So the fun begins.
Oh, yes.
It's. Lot bigger, absolutely.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot going on there. Well, that doesn't have, I mean, that's just the empty bunker, basically, it's got the levees in there, but it doesn't have the full budget, see that? That would be beneficial.
Guys.
Uh are you here Friday? Actually, you could probably cover this too if you're interested. So we're, we've got four guys from the public government here this week, and we're doing remote learning last week, they're gonna press this up. And so uh they're doing whole monitor, they never fishing test last week, which did not go very well.
I was gonna, I was gonna say something about that.
So. Well, there's two parts, like number one, Officer sixty-five caught their fishing email, so I had. Oh, just saying.
Oh, yeah, just, yeah.
Yeah, they just. Are you gonna post it?
Yeah.
Oh, then I'll wait, because it's ITC.
Yeah, so you won't.
Friday, don't come in, go through that. Quick time, uh I don't know.
She, yeah, she can text sometime. It's another job.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I I might be.
Still doing my eighteen.
I think be available.
Actually, no, I can't work in no one Friday.
Actually, I'm in Albona tomorrow. I've worked out for a while. I went on tomorrow. I'm away Thursday, so.
It'll be fairly cold tonight.
I don't know. I have five weeks. Last week it was Spencer. That's some of my back city. I guess I went to Brit one day. Something like for painting that. I graduated this, the Tribune.
Yeah.
All the power.
Okay.
Playing ball this morning, you know, hard, my spirit.
Name is familiar, I probably.
Coach. I was very.
Isn't it?
Yeah, but. Shoulder here.
After full.
I know. Hard to be my coach.
Gotta get in the weight room, get back.
I've been, I've been, I've been. Might not be able to tell, but I've been there. You might never be, but I still do it. No, he saw my dad, he didn't understand. Same goes, I mean, it's a protein. I eat four eggs every morning.
You're probably like, I, I mean. Now I can cast, see myself going down a little bit on meals, but I can just not fall down anything.
Yeah.
Doesn't change much.
You should try my diet. I can see.
See her, see what died. See who you, I think I've been on that.
Really, it's all working. It's yours. Yeah, we're gonna be like five pounds.
Yeah, you're old twig, that's why.
I was writing well. It'd be way less. Do you, uh, you put lead in your shoes on the days? Like my, like my van, you throw some tools up in the bag, so it rides nice, serious now. Yep. Give you a tank. There you go. Do you tank, you did pretty good player miles. There you go.
Yeah, great.
So gas. All the gas going down.
Is it?
Right now. For this month. It's a little funny. We told. Drove, drove almost fifty thousand miles this year. A lot of times.
Yeah, I, I can relate.
We've had that Enoch's for a year, but forty-some thousand miles. I don't like that. The value. Bought with twenty-five thousand miles, now it's got sixty-some thousand miles over six.
Resale this way.
Yeah. I actually think about some. Yeah, sell before it reaches a hundred thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
That's when it really.
Yeah. I don't know, I mean. Depends on how long I'm gonna keep it.
I'm tired of making car payments on it. But we actually are gonna probably sell it.
Oh, okay.
Somebody can put those payments into like a.
Are you gonna sell it or trade it for something else? Okay, well, that's different, yeah, if you're reducing the vehicle, that's one thing.
Yeah. But I won't beat that for you. Just, are we, we're a lot of people outside. The, you wouldn't desert your games, like gonna have all the. Van?
Yeah.
Vans, I don't have many vans in all of the. I think they do. About two dollars three.
Oh.
Daily puts on like fifteen or, uh, ten thousand meter, so that's gonna be her van. She did her motorcycle during, during summer. Like, let me get a motorcycle. I don't know how, I've never been to it.
I agree.
I, I'd like a garage, keep it in first. Yeah, I don't have the spot to keep that, a motorcycle. At my shop, and that, we have our garage, but it's, our garage is like a lumberyard. Half or more, full of lumber, I can hardly put more wood in that garage, elbow car garage, barely enough for the park.
Certified levy is all.
You need some lumber, you can flip me now.
So you kind of be taxable, value additions is true. That's some history stuff like that, but.
Yeah. Well, it has, what was granted to these departments last year?
Whatever. Who said it's sent to you that way?
Yeah, like, like amount granted, that's what you call it.
Yeah, that's all.
That's.
That's all for stuff.
Yeah.
Out of the.
So then is this like? Then we can write in here what they're requesting.
So they don't help.
You know.
Then you can write on it, put her back in. Yeah, and then.
And then all these, just when each department comes and talks, we'll be right.
That's where. Well, yeah, you can write notes later, but there will actually be. Different line items, so like one will be. Fuel, one will be utilities, home bills, all their common things that way, how it broke down in the, in the computer system. It'll have all that, and then you'll have prior years, you'll have. How much of this year's budget they've actually used year to date, so you can see, okay, are they gonna go over, are they under? What's it looking like that way? And then obviously the discussion with the department at the same. What's it looking like?
Sure. Ask me, you can tell us.
You can, and sometimes I write numbers or write notes with the line items, so I know, okay.
Yeah.
The car, like if the share, if they talk about buying three new trucks this year or whatever, I sometimes I make notes on the actual line items too, that's how I.
Yeah, yeah.
But that is a place you can't take.
Cause there's a lot of them, everybody wants to town.
Yeah. Those have probably been there for years, that same page.
One of those deals.
In, in those.
Waiting for someone to use them.
Yeah. And I mean, I, I don't, I've written on some of the note pages online for the general ones that way, but most of the time I tend to do that.
So you only get a.
Yeah, so. You can have them all year long, but that's what they're used for the budget, yeah.
I didn't know if this was something we're kind of all year. Yeah, for the year or whatever.
Yeah, so there will be. When the departments come in with their budget, they'll, that'll be more detailed information for all the line items that way.
Close, Karen. Okay. Uh, yeah, absolutely, I, I'm not in front of my calendar at the moment, I'm actually, uh, just in between meetings here. Could, could you send, would you be able to send me a text with your name and number or email? And then I will, I will get back to you here. Couple few hours yet today. Thank you. Bye. What did you say? There you go. My dad. Hey, you got a card from Donald Trump on the van yesterday, forgot to give it to you this morning, I'll save it. Yeah, that's. Especially if they're still sending it to me at my parents' address, I haven't lived there for four years.
Right?
I have some, I, I, I just can't get them to send. Like, say I had them before, three, four years ago when I was at my parents', I just can't get my writing, I do add this every time, and I called them and told them, they'll send it to my parents. Like, something, they're not gonna live there.
Yeah, exactly. Then you won't actually get it.
Yeah.
I got something for my grandma from one of those like charities or whatever.
Sure, yeah.
The donation thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't even remember which one it was, and it's like, I put there for. I don't know, five, six years now.
Okay. Are you getting around that a little help?
They're just on the interbank route.
Okay.
Right on the west side.
Did you get your truck fixed?
What?
Do you get your truck fixed?
Um. I gotta do, I gotta do it, like.
Okay.
Did not get the rest taken care of, like, but I think I'll be able to take that, take care of that without the body shop.
Need to get those dead poppers.
I beat on it with my fist the other night, and I actually moved it, so it didn't quite make it perfectly straight, but I think it'll be fixed. I think I'll get the rest with a piece of wood. I didn't wanna. Beat on it quite as hard with my fist as I would with. I'd be a, well, I'd be a little more momentum behind.
Wait, so that. Yeah.
And then that with it.
That's nice. This, the hot weekend. Wait, this one. Go way up there.
Or.
I've already worked ahead, so. Yeah, I mean, six, four thirty though. Right, you got supper calling, maybe. Maybe, we'll see. See how a bit of the time. Right, how many will be if we get this thing there? Hey, you come here, I'm. Turn, what else do I get? You can just. So they tell you to lose fire if you get it. Looks like the, right, like Taylor's wedding.
What's that for?
Oh, really? And they give some back in.
On.
Urging, there's something, yeah, Iowa's renewable.
Oh, yeah, I got that.
Yeah.
Very sure.
Urging us.
Maybe I got.
Support of the pipeline.
No, I got it here, I didn't look at it until I took.
Okay.
But yeah, I did get.
Yeah. Pipeline. Oh, no, it's just kind of in general, supporting.
The, the O two.
Supporting the pipeline, or supporting the alcohol industry is what they're saying. Yeah, I was talking to a cousin. Yesterday, who's a lawyer down in Opie. And their office, he can't really talk a whole lot about it, cause their office has some pretty major clients on both sides of the pipeline, but, but, uh. It's a, yeah, he's, he's kind of. It's flowing right through my uncle's ground, God, too.
Stranger. Evening this morning.
A lot. She drove.
I drove here, that was, that made me tired, such a long round.
Yeah, I'm like.
Hey, it's nice now, the bridge is open, you don't have to take a shit to her.
I know. That is true. Um, yeah. I started watching that, like. Can you see?
I, I was watching. TV in general, it was actually paramount, paramount, plus I was watching some stuff for a while.
That's pretty good.
But, um, then had a friend go like. Midnight, and. That was just a blow around. That's fine, I had a later night's.
The older guy. Yeah.
I'm friends, I'm friends.
Friends.
It's good that ass.
Yeah, right?
We had the Mercy Home Call, that's the main part when you're.
You know, when you get a call, it's when you're monitoring your life.
See. If I didn't have my phone on, I'll do, there's no way I would wake up to vibrating.
Oh, I turn my phone off. So I.
I mean, I usually leave on vibrate, just that I'll never wake up to it, once I'm out, I'm gone.
I do vibrate, and then.
Wow, and it's, it's like three rooms away from where we are, where it's plugged into tonight, so.
That helps, yeah, I probably should.
I always hear the theme of the text.
Yeah.
He's waking up.
More presents for us.
Yeah.
All right.
More things that you get educated on.
Yeah.
Love suit, that's what we got served this morning.
Oh, nice.
For person.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
For what?
Mr. Goose.
Merry Christmas.
Oh, what?
Four hundred and eighty-nine.
How much?
Four hundred and eighty-nine.
That's what that is.
What are you getting sued for?
Um, previous board members all the way back to Elbrecker, so there's a couple decades.
Are you kidding?
Oh, no.
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 This is a.
Paper, if you want to look at it.
Heck, it's a third.
You want this job? Third one this year.
Everybody asked me.
It was co she.
Yeah. He likes cutting trees though.
Yeah, he probably.
There's another one up here.
Go big or go home, I guess.
Lot of papers.
Apparently you just don't understand legal system.
Oh, no, not now.
Turn.
You don't, but she's.
You're probably getting. Close to retirement, huh? Yeah, it's on.
Yeah, what are they gonna have, two screwdrivers?
Yeah, same.
Yeah, I don't want these guys to.
I've got it, it's retired.
Trying to, it's all trying to steal.
So Marine, you're gonna stay in Niacog for another year?
Yeah.
Roger took my spot.
Yes, I had to be on that nominating committee.
Did you?
Yeah. So that's how it got. I was like, that's okay, I, yeah. But I did say after that, then, no. I mean, I was on that when I first started. When Joe Myrie.
Yeah.
I think Joe Myrie and I both started at about the same.
Yeah, poor Joe retired though. Yeah, he retired, he said enough of it.
I realize that, Roger.
A little salt in the water, ain't ya?
Yeah.
I kinda miss him, though, he was a good guy.
Oh, hey. Joe was a good guy.
He was. He, uh.
He really knew.
He's very capable. He knew people. I mean, the meetings, like, three months, he knew everybody by name. Yep. And he might only met you twice, and he knew names.
Oh, yeah, Joe?
Yeah.
Absolutely, yes.
As far as Tiff Districts, he was a. Expert. As far as Tiff Districts, he was a expert. He knew the game.
He was, I mean, he absolutely was, he worked with Bob Jostin.
Yep.
In the very beginning when they were developing that.
Yep.
For the state of Iowa. And then, um, you know, so Bob was really this right-hand person.
Yeah, I, I. Leaned a lot of information off of him.
Oh, I did too.
Yeah, and it was always accurate, didn't have to question it. Yeah. You shouldn't let people like that retire.
Like me?
No.
Like Joe, shit.
Well, you, you're not retired.
Can I see that packet? I mean, no, not mine.
This?
Yeah, I just wanted, yes.
The last one? I took the home set on the desk, it's still sitting there.
Mine's sitting there, yeah. But I didn't read the one for the power lines either, that was.
I'll say four hundred and eighty-nine papers, it's a lot of papers.
That cousin of us.
Right, Bob and Trish. I thought it was down, they came back with cooler after cooler.
I probably saw.
He said the eating down there is, you like seafood, there's good eating down there. Remember Bob and Dad went down to, uh, Wexman College. Mardi Gras. And they had an old guy give them a tour and he said, no, two cases of food is not brought around. Two cases of food is spices.
Spices.
He goes, now they kinda changed it so if you say Cajun, it's like, oh, man.
See the Iowa State. Six o'clock.
Where at?
Must be at I, cause Iowa State, it must be at Iowa.
On the floor, it's dorm floor, they all been going to Iowa, the girls' Iowa State games, basketball.
Yeah. I need to ask the Mrs. Beers. Yeah.
Iowa State versus.
That's Thursday, Iowa won today tomorrow night and then that, isn't Iowa State going pretty good? Yeah, then, uh, tonight's Iowa.
Yeah.
I think the hot damn men. Yeah, Iowa plays Duke at eight thirty.
Boys tell me, if they go to Iowa State boys' game, they get charged. They go to a girls' Iowa State game, they don't get charged, why's that?
As a student.
Yeah.
We should have a season ticket, season.
There is a student section, but it's probably the demand difference, I mean. Yeah, I mean, the girls can draw a decent crowd, and they did a year, but. It wasn't every seat in the house, that's probably why they give it pre-discussed to get more participation. I would just about guarantee that's the demand, because then you can really fill every seat in the house. So, if they give a pre-discuss, you'd have a chance there.
Yeah, I know. They spend a football game less than a bunch of money.
I've been to a few games, but I would use it in New York.
I knew it was probably handled by.
Have you got a hand deliverer?
I told Barnes, just saying, you have to turn, seeing what my obligations, why should I be responsible?
Right, it shouldn't be me, no, he's not supposed to be responsible for that. They didn't leave boundaries, I told you, I don't make.
Which, that, that I can understand, but I don't want the other ones to be served, they're not.
Boys could be served at their home. They're supposed to be served in person.
But those are the prior. And they be served at this address, they can't be.
I thought you had to sign for. You signed?
I, I didn't have a stack in my name, true.
I thought you guys had the sign when you got served, I think you must.
I thought you did too.
But he went clear about that.
Yeah, exactly.
You served to the person that you got.
I don't know how they are serving.
So what you're saying, that next, he pulls his stone again next year, I'll get served again even though I'm.
Heard the library, you know, it was the, it's a question I was. Oh, yeah.
Ones over there, they.
Not sure, I'm. Library?
I'm assuming.
And Marine come, I'm talking, she's. Right. Yeah, two minutes.
Marine last.
No, she's, she's back there, you just can't see her.
You don't get off that easy.
We're gonna put, cut a hole through that pole.
Yeah, I think that'd be a heavy load for the.
There's nothing on the third floor, is there?
Your post underneath it?
I don't want the third floor, beyond the second floor.
Well, because that window there.
Well, yeah, that's probably part of it.
Yeah.
Steel beam on a steel beam.
It's funny they have one here, but they don't have them on the other side of the hallway.
Yeah.
It's cause the window, they don't have a big, they got a big window there too, don't they?
Yeah.
If you look, it's wider here too.
Yeah, it is, it's wider on this side, those are in straight line with the rest of the, uh, walls, so the outside walls would be a little bearing.
Yeah, this is the only place in the building they have a pole.
That's probably because of this.
It is ten o'clock, we will reconvene, and our first thing on the agenda at ten o'clock is Cassuth County Economic Development. And Marine, you're hiding back there, but we're still gonna call on you, or whoever you got.
Yeah, that'd be me, um, I'm Jason Mortick, I'm president of KCDC. Uh, I also work over at Iowa State Bank, and I'd like to thank the board supervisors for the past commitment to KCDC in August. Is that our internal reporting? Uh, budget we're presenting today, it's the same as years past, we're requesting a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. All right, my name is Sean, I'm a board member of KCDC, I own the Farmer State Bank, and I'm Bill Whitmore, I'm a spin. Um, appreciate your time today, um, I'd just like briefly to highlight some of the marketing workforce initiatives that we do. As we all know, the, the ability to find qualified workers is very strained right now, here and across the country. Uh, two of the things that have been very successful for us, emailing businesses, the people that live in the area, and we match those residents with potential employers. Uh, then we, our employers also post job opportunities, both of these initiatives have been very successful in that year. Um, marketing initiatives, we do business called Business, or business as an area, that we appreciate them, see what their needs might be, and see what can be. And aid that, uh, business survey, we set out a survey to gauge their, is what they need, you know, how they're, how they're doing, their future plans, et cetera. Uh, economic impact analysis, you know, what we do, how we, uh, AD, economic activity of the area. Newsletter, calendar events, website, all of these are very critical to what we do into growing our business area in the area, thank you.
I'm also the chair of the revolving loan fund, um. The, the fund was established in two thousand and four for small business development, provides a source of financing, which may not otherwise be available. Uh, to start up, for startup and expanding businesses, loans are for up to ten years, for a maximum of fifty thousand dollars. So far, we've made twenty-one loans, total of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and approximately a hundred twelve jobs have been created or saved in the area. Some of the local businesses that we've helped include. Uh, K L G A, Gold Eagle, White Transfer, Ketter Bay, Snap Lawn, and a little bit, these are just a few businesses located in Suth County. Not to mention the businesses we've assisted Palo Alto. We meet with a variety of potential existing businesses to assist in providing guidance on business and marketing plans, along with coordinating our efforts with the area.
Morning, I'm Christine Newman from the City of Bangor, and I'm the city administrator there, as well as the city clerk. Um, I'm just gonna talk a little bit about, um, what KCDC does for business developments and community betterment. As well as professional trainings for the area, um, I would say that professional trainings has been. Greatly beneficial to many people in this community. Um, we don't have the opportunities to get a lot of professionals to come up to northern Iowa. These tend to stay down towards the Ains, the Boyne area, and we're able to group different areas into different businesses. With government and the private sector together to get some valuable training in human resources, payroll, uh, leadership. Number of things, and then add a class that is free small. Um, KCDC has been able to provide that for many people, and that is just a valuable resource. As well as the clerks all meeting together, um, I think that is a huge attribute to the. To the county, that the clerks are all learning what needs to be done. And I think it ultimately helps our relationship with the county, with Tammy and the treasurer's office and. How we communicate with each other, and that we're all on the same page, and we're understanding what we're doing. And we can talk about it with each other, so that has just been huge, um, we just had a clerks meeting where we had. Someone from the state of Iowa Economic Development Authority come in, Amy Kuehlers. Um, and she discussed Iowa Source Links, which brings many, uh. Tools for businesses that we now have access to, that we can tell local people when they're looking for something, where to go. And get some of this information, um, so it's been great, we have the intern program, so many leadership development courses. But it's just been invaluable to the government side of things, thank you.
I'm Eric Burton, I'm on the E C Board of Directors, and I'm also the CEO of Sterility. I represent Timeberg Communications as the general manager, Breaker Telecommunications as general manager for Suth County Footprints. Um, as you can see, we've made great strides in the growth and fostering initiatives in our county and program, county organization. To continue this momentum, you need the budget to sustain these programs, which have been, that's like. Uh, the E C Board Directors would like to thank board supervisors for your past commitment and forward future support for these causes. Uh, thank you all for the opportunity to present this material today.
Actually, hot off the press, our new newsletter, which I did provide in your packet too, so, and, um, we do two newsletters a year. That cover a six-month window, um, so. Um, do you have any questions for us, or, um, anyone from the audience have any questions for us, Lori, do you have any questions for us? I serve in a lot of state and local and regional boards, um, so we have. We try to make sure, and that's one thing that the board of directors from the very beginning had said was a critical piece to us. Is that we make sure that we are going to make our area known, and make sure that we are committed and, and will, you know. Show that, um, we wanna be a part of things and be at the table when there's decisions that are being made. And I would have to say, I'm very happy with what has happened over the course of time, especially during the COVID time period. Um, it was really important to be able to be on those stakeholders and to be able to give input. We did bring our contractual agreement, the twenty-eight E agreement that Tammy has.
Yep.
And it's our annual agreement that is now required by the state auditor's office.
Other than the twenty-eight E agreement, you have anything else you'd like to present or?
Um, Roger, should I be presenting anything else?
Everybody was so direct and got done so quick, you know.
Well, as you can see, and, and Roger are part of that, um, and Donnie was too. Um, Jack, over the years, you've been our alternate and served on the board again, you've served during a time when it was very critical. Um, when we had a very critical project for our area, um, Jack was very good about jumping in. We had a very small amount of time to be able to put this project together, and it would have had a huge impact on our area. Um, it was, it is located in Algonah, Iowa, um, and it would have had an impact all over. Um, I would say probably about a good six county area, if we could, if they would have left and gone to Plymouth. There is, uh, Arkansas, and Jeff was very much involved in all of the, the process with that. So there are many times that we have to pull in board of supervisors when we have things like that, because they're a critical piece for our area and county. They represent the county, and what can the county also do to be a part of our incentives and, um, initiatives? And also to show the real support that we need to have.
Thank you. If there's nothing else on that, we will go to the twenty-eight E agreement that we have in our folder, with KCEDC. I have a motion by Mr. Plath to approve. I'll second your motion, any discussion on, uh, twenty-eight E agreement?
Just for clarification, has this gone through Todd? I assumed it has, but I don't know.
Yeah, I sent it to Todd. I don't know if I get a response, but it's the same as last year's. So last year's went through and he approved it. So he hasn't sent it back saying that he hasn't.
Pretty generic.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I didn't see any issues in it. I just didn't know if he had looked at it.
I did send it.
We have twenty-eighty agreements with everybody now, I think.
Now we have to, yeah.
Yeah. There are no more discussion. Do a roll call vote while my throat gets better.
Spector.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
Plath.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Just wanna say, Dylan, thank you for your time and service.
Yeah, thank you.
We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I wanted to make sure that Donnie also knew that you were very interested to have two of us here as a service. So, um, thank you. Do you want to just, do you want me to come over and get the?
Oh, here.
We can sign it right now.
Would you also like to set up a time to come and meet and we can go over? Do you want to hold it or you're not?
I'm usually, I'm usually still too glad next week there. Can't hear that.
Yep.
Okay. In case you're gonna meet with her next week, it'd have to be after almost.
No, it was January. I had a non-contendal horse.
Yeah, and some, I have a couple that want to reschedule. I can't make it, so I don't know what times they're gonna reschedule.
You got the time set for the conversation board yet?
I'm looking at the twenty and five. So, um, I have, I don't know if that's.
I just wrote that he can't be here.
But he said it is that, but that's okay to go ahead without, that he doesn't need to be there.
It's ten fifteen and we will have a presentation, I think, by the Library Association, so take it away.
Good morning, everybody. Are you making us stand here? We're a little short on representation today. It's a busy time of the year. But we'll introduce ourselves. Um, I'm Lori Walton, I'm the director of Yalgone Public Library.
My name's Damian Strider, the director of Titan there.
I'm Sandy Long, the director at Windhorst.
And I am Lady Mitchell, the director in Wesley.
Uh, yeah, so I'll, I'll start us off here. I, I wanna start off kind of broadly and then I'll focus it in a little bit, but uh, I just wanna start off by saying thank you for your support for this year. Um, you know, I'm kinda new to Iowa. I've been here for a couple of years. I've been a library director for, for less than a year. And I think one of my, my biggest observations of being in this part of Iowa when I first arrived was the uniqueness of the library situation in the small towns. It's something that, uh, that I think is sort of unique to the area and is really just healthy for the region. Uh, in a lot of ways, I just think abstractly, libraries can be a great people asset. Uh, you have different school districts, you have kids going here, you have people in there. There can be different qualities of education of teachers. But as long as you have that library card in your back pocket, when you essentially have so humanities accumulated knowledge, uh, distributed at your fingertips. And to be able to preserve that, which is something we're doing, just something you guys are contributing with, I think is essential. Not just, uh, you know, for, for this program or that program, but I will argue even for democracy itself, which may seem like a hyperbole or uh, it's an overstatement, but that's what I believe. And I think a lot of the other Sioux County libraries believe that too. Um, and, you know, I, I think we're more than just a library too, is I think everybody will attest up here. That, uh, that with all of the towns not having schools. Uh, a lot of ways, we're, we're the community center, the meeting place with school, we're a senior center, we're a computer lab. Uh, we sort of pick up all these different things that, uh, that the town needs. Uh, and I think all of us too are, uh, very mindful of making the most with the money that we have. Uh, you know, all of us write grants, we fundraise, we give local taxes, but the county is a crucial piece to our overall uh, annual budget to elaborate what look, the way it does now, Sioux County, without, uh, without your guys' support. Um, and then, you know, I'll end with just a few specific things that I've gone to libraries on over the past year that, uh, slightly, just a little anecdotes. Um, it's technical Tuesdays. I've, I've taught people, I've taught more people how to send an email with an attachment in the past year than I did, than I thought was possible. Uh, but you have a lot of people that just aren't familiar with it and they may not have it at home. And, uh, are very excited just to learn, uh, some new basic things. We have, I think the best pizza thing for Sioux County, it brings, I have some disagreement on that. But, uh, we have pages for pizza at the Titan Library. It's a shameless repoff with the, the book at club. Uh, Pizza Hut used to do. But, uh, we're next door to a pizza place named Reeves. And they donated pizza the past few years where students put in so many reading sessions. I put a stamp on it, you take it over to the, uh, pizza place and I get a free pizza. Um, and, you know, uh, we've had a lot of presentations at the library. So I think a big part of, I guess, my mission the first year is to bring as much local talent as possible back to the library. Uh, there, there's a lot of people that, uh, grew up in Titanca, they might have moved away and still have family there. There's people that were born and raised and have lived there their whole life, that have a lot of unique skills. And I think the library's been a good sort of venue to, to display those for the community to learn from and enjoy. So, you know, you had, just this month, we have, uh, somebody that's, you know, politics reporter for NPR that's from Titanca. It's gonna come back, but she's over Christmas, give a talk on journalism. At the Saturday, we got a guy in town who started his own brewery. I talked about the, uh, the brewing process, how, how beer is made. Um, so, yeah, I think there's sort of a lane, um, at the library for, for us to sort of bring back. And give a spotlight to local town. I know. And, yeah, that's, it's just a little snapshot of Titanca. I'll give the floor to anybody else.
You put snapshot of Algonah. We are reaching people from birth all the way to the elderly, seniors, citizens who are coming in for technology training. And we want to thank you for your support because the support you give us enables us to be able to have the programmings that we offer, um, support the people that come in that need some assistance. The two of us are probably two of the newer librarians in Cassup County. And I have to say, one of the most fun and rewarding pieces of my job has been working with this group of librarians. They are talented, um, they're dedicated and we have started to work more and more together on group projects, which I think I'll tell you about. We did. This summer, we did the Sioux County Camp, Library Camp out at Smith Lake. And we all worked together on that and pooled the funds from our association and wow, it was really good. Even though I couldn't be there, I've heard lots of good. So. We had a lot of fun that day and we drew a lot of children from across the entire county. And we have to thank the Algonah School System who supplied the buses to get the kids to Smith Lake. That was wonderful. Um, there were other groups that supported us too.
I think, um, I'm the president of the association. I don't know how that happened, but um, it's got renewed.
Yeah.
This is my third term. Um, what are there, twelve of us in?
Yes.
There are twelve libraries in Cassup County. And it's not, we aren't just books. And I think I say that every year, we're not just books. These are twelve people that hold positions that are passionate about libraries and helping people. Um, it's not just I'll help you find a book. It's, I will help you set up your Kindle. I will help you add an attachment to an email. I will teach you how to whatever. Um, whenever, whoever walks in the door, I'm, whatever I'm doing at my desk stops and I'm helping them. Um, and the twelve of us working together, which we do very well, um, really sort of helps that. We'd like to do another Mindus County Camp again this year. We want to keep it fresh and new and exciting for the kids. Um, last year we brought in a bald eagle and I don't know how we're gonna top that because that was probably the coolest thing that's ever happened in my life, but. Um, so we'd like to keep collaborating and, and working together on projects like that too. Do you have any questions? Were that good explaining?
You've been in here, uh, every year, I think maybe.
New for the two of us though, so.
Yeah.
Nothing changes, but everything changes.
Yep.
Yeah.
What's, what's your request for this year?
They, they got it in there.
It's in the brochure. It's in the brochure.
Five percent.
The Library Association.
I, I hope. I appreciate our library there.
We'll see you again next year. Well, thank you very much for your support.
Yep.
What, what are you going to do?
No, I'm just gonna ask if anybody else had any questions for you.
Appreciate what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you guys for coming in.
A long day for the bodies too. I hope they're all responding to the way we're.
I don't know.
I don't know, but it's gonna be hard to beat.
You know, one person that taught for, uh, for TBC, he gave a presentation at the library. He's actually a stone pilot. You've never tear him a garden. Yeah, he has a secret life as a a stone pilot.
He buzzes over, head over top of Algonah quite almost every day.
Good luck. Rest of your meeting, guys.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else to come before the good of Cassup County? I think next week we, uh, looked at the agenda already, so I think we're good. Motion to adjourn?
The move.
Motion by Casey.
Second.
Second by Spector. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Ours. We're done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's the last one we're meeting. Yep. And I'll find out.
Okay.
You on the phone up there?
Yeah, we can put him up here.
Hey, everybody don't look at him.
We'll click up.